Starting and then let me, let me post it to YouTube, okay?
Let me know when you're ready to go.
Um, okay.
All set?
Go ahead.
Okay, welcome everyone to the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Rush Planning Board. So we'll call the members to establish that we have a corner.
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Here.
Member Werner?
Here.
Member Ah?
Here.
Chairman Struck?
Here. Okay, I am Scott Struck, the brand-new planning board chairman. This is my first time leading a planning board meeting, and I'll probably learn, if I haven't already, that it's a lot easier to sit there and watch other people do it than to realize the intricacies of doing it yourself. We do not have yet named a deputy chairman, that's a work in process. But Newtown engineers have also been named for the town board or by the town board. So that's the MRB group represented tonight by John Hinman. And I believe a fellow named Sherman Gitters will be working with us, or Gittens rather, will be working with us a lot as well. New attorneys have also been named by the town board, and that's the Boilin Group, represented by Robert Marx. So you're the only one from the Boilin Group, Robert, is that right?
I'm here.
Okay, okay.
Scott, I'm here as well, from David Howe, David Howe.
Okay, David Howe is here as well. But as I understand it, Robert will be the primary representative of the planning board, is that right?
Yep. That's right.
Okay, having done that, I want to acknowledge some past and recent service to the planning board by planning board members and others. First, John Felsen was supervisor, I'm sorry, the chairman for who knows how long, probably twenty years or more, up until about a year ago. John had a lot of experience, he worked on, led us through projects, large and small, and he seemed to remember everything he'd ever done. So something like that came back again, or the same thing came back again, he was, he remembers what was done. John Morelli similarly was the deputy chairman up until a year ago. John was very proactive in working for the planning board. He authored a number of things like the flow chart of the tier-three, large-scale solar method of approval by multiple groups within, within the town. He also authored kind of the resolution report that we use for providing input to the town board by the planning board. So he was very helpful in doing those sorts of things. Don Sweet was a longtime member, again, I don't know how long, I think close to thirty years. Don was the planning board chairman for the prior year, for twenty twenty-one. I most recognize Don as having incredible knowledge of the town, including things like the quality of topsoil and the depth of bedrock of every, every lot in the town. So I didn't quantify their years of experience, but those three guys probably had combined fifty to sixty years of experience. Also wanted to mention, there's others I want to recognize, Deputy Clerk Shelley O'Hern and the twenty twenty-one deputy chair, deputy, yeah, deputy chair Jeff Warner, kind of kept the home fires burning while no one was named quite yet, beginning of the year to be chairman. So we really didn't skip much of a beat, although with the January twelfth organizational meeting certainly, and the fact that I wasn't named, and the town attorney and the town engineers weren't named, we were a bit late in getting a start on the application tonight. Along the same lines, I want to give thanks to town engineers and the town attorneys for doing a great job of getting their information out in a short amount of time. Given that, I want to, well, let me first say too that I appreciate Jeff Warner's work over the past year. Don Sweet had a work schedule where he often couldn't attend, and Jeff did actually an unusual amount of work in leading the planning board for the last year. But given that we got a little bit of a late start on a meeting that was less than a week later, I want to apologize to the applicants, if they're on, and are they on, the LaRue Associates?
Yes, this is Greg McMahon from McMahon LaRue.
Okay, Greg, I want to apologize to you and getting information late to you from the town engineer particularly. It wasn't the town engineer's fault by any means, but it was just a cycle and the reorganization that we went through. So they did a good job of getting out the information once they got the official duty and request to do it. And I know you've done a great job of reacting to it, and we'll get to that later during the application. During the, here. Okay. Given that, two, two minor items I wanted to follow up on. One was in order for the chairman and the deputy chairman to be able to sign documents, the site plans and such, and have those submitted to the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development. We have to essentially have a signature card. I know Shelley's already got the form to do that, so I will need to sign that and deputy when they're named. One other follow-up, Robert, for you, and that is the zoning board application twenty twenty-one fourteen Z, which was Acuca Studios. That that company filed for a zoning variance because they're expanding their building with less distance to the, less setback than required by the code. So they got a variance successfully. But my question was, certainly, and we'll talk more about this during the meeting notes, the variance absolutely was needed, but they're now about, their buildings now about four times what it was, what they started with, with the original site plan. So my question was, does that warrant the need for a new site plan review as well?
Yeah, so I would obviously like, like an opportunity to take a look at the prior variance, excuse me, the prior site plan approval that they received. But generally speaking, it's the, it's the code enforcement officer or the building inspector that, that will need to evaluate how the operation is, is, is currently operating, and whether or not it's, it's now expanded and it's no longer in accordance with the site plan approval that they originally received. If the building inspector or code enforcement officer says, yeah, they are acting beyond that site plan approval that they, that they received, then he can, he can enforce the code and, and force them to reapply to the planning board for a new site plan.
Okay, good, I mean, I don't have a personal row to hoe here, it just struck me that an increase of that significance over a couple of different applications might warrant such a thing. Okay. So I think we're ready to move into the approval of the minutes. So of the board members, anybody want to make any comments about the minutes?
I have nothing.
Steve, anything?
I didn't have anything to discuss.
Okay, Jeff?
Uh, no, Scott, I'm all set.
Okay, Carl, well, let's see, Carl, you can't, you can say anything you want, but you can't vote because you weren't, you weren't here at the primary.
Correct.
Um, okay, well, I do have a few things. Now, there's a couple, a couple of typos, which I really don't care if they change or not. Obviously, Shelley, you probably copied, cut and paste from the agenda, so the agenda shows at top of the meeting minutes, and I'm sure you don't want that. There are typos on page four and seven, which are just that typos. But let me, let me talk about a couple of other things. At the bottom of page one, under the public hearing, second last paragraph, it says the property is zoned C-C, and indeed, that is what the application said. And if you look at the zoning map, that's what it's called, C-C. However, commercial in the town code is actually just a plain C. So again, I don't, I don't particularly care if that's changed, but I just want the members to recognize that the property is C. Just, just like we have that problem with the zoning map calling limited industrial, it's listed as light industrial, it's really limited industrial. And the same, the same thing, C versus CC occurs on page four. So that one is not a part of the, the application title. So I appreciate that was changed to C rather than CC. That's at the very bottom of page four. Another correction is on page three. Jeff was being very kind, because I believe in that paragraph, he is called Mr. Warner with an A instead of Mr. Werner with an A.
I saw that.
You're just too nice to mention it.
Very common mistakes, gotten used to over the years.
Okay, another one is on page seven. And this one, I think, is of more consequence. It says that I, it's what we just talked about with the Acuca Studios. And it says that I noted that an area variance was granted earlier in the month to a project that he believes might have been, have needed a site plan approval instead. That's not what I think I said, or I didn't intend to say, it should say he believes might also have needed a site plan approval. So it's no question it needed the variance. But I intended to say, and thought I did, that it also might need a site plan. On the, on the last page, page eight, just before the adjournment, adjournment, it says the planning board will prepare a memo to the town board to consider this option, this option being a lot-line adjustment policy that's much simplified from a subdivision or resubdivision. I thought what we said there is that we decided not to pursue a lot-line adjustment process because we thought we could get in some complications with septic and that sort of thing. So at least at this point in time, I thought we agree we would not pursue it. Does anybody remember differently, or what I did?
I agree with you, Scott, I think that's, we had tossed it back and forth either way. And the decision was because we do not have an official planning department to handle this, that we basically just have a, a very part-time planning board and use of our town engineer and town attorney. We thought we would just leave it because of, to make sure that, just what you said, we don't run any septic systems, but also issues with the flag lots that we're going to be addressing and site distance and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, one, one other point I'll make, there, there is, there is a section in the code under subdivisions which states that resubdivisions are handled like a subdivision. But if the planning board determines that subdivision is very simple, like a lot-line adjustment, or maybe a combination of lots, we have the authority to essentially simplify the process, which I assume means would not require all the inputs and considerations that we normally go through. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. We talk about something that's not on the agenda, and that's optimization technologies. But I inserted it in place of another item that disappeared, we'll talk about that later. So, Robert, beware that I'll be bringing that up again to see what you think about it.
Sounds good.
Um, so I'll move that the meeting notes be approved as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, oh, and well, Shelley, want to take a roll? Since we're, since we're offline, we tend to like to go through the process.
Member McPherson? Member Werzer?
Hi.
Member Werner?
Hi.
Member Ah?
abstained? Because I was not part of the board at the time?
Chairman Struck?
Hi. Okay, I think we're up to the primary topic tonight, and that is the public hearing for an application. Shelley, would you please read that application?
Notice is hereby given pursuant to the provisions of the zoning law of the town of Rush and Section two-seven-four A and two-seven-four B of the town law, a public hearing will be held by the planning board of the town of Rush at the Rush Town Hall, five-nine-seven-seven East Henrietta Road, Rush, New York, one-four-five-four-three via Zoom on January eighteenth at twenty, two thousand and twenty-two at seven PM to hear all persons interested in the following application. Application two-zero-two-two dash zero-one P by McMahon LaRue Associates requesting a site plan review approval for proposed construction of a single-family dwelling with a septic system and driveway access to a garage. The property is located at one-zero-seven-nine Rush Castle Road, Rush, New York, one-four-five-four-three, and is zoned R-thirty.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to comment on what, what they want to do, and when anything else you'd like to?
Sure, again, my name is Greg McMahon, I'm with McMahon LaRue Associates, eight-twenty-two Holt Road, Webster, New York. The plans that we have submitted are for a new single-family home at ten-seventy-nine Rush Scottsville Road. It's a four-acre parcel on the south side of Rush Scottsville Road, and it is west of the three-ninety interchange. Fairly straightforward, the application said, single-family home with a septic system, public water, electric. We have gotten approval from the Monroe County Water Authority for the water service. I think that copy of that approval letter was sent to the town. The health department has reviewed the septic system and are ready to sign the plans following the signatures of the town and the town engineer. And we have submitted plans to the New York State DOT for the highway access. And they're in the review process, and they do also require a copy of this secret determination from the town. So once that's done, we'll forward that on to the, to the state DOT. We did receive comments from MRB. We've gone through those, we don't have any issues with the comments. I think we've, we've sent out a, a response letter just acknowledging those comments we have made. I believe a majority of the revisions have already been made to the plans. And there was an, an item in there about a, an easement for the town-wide drainage district. And we've added that to the plan, and we'll, we'll take care of that process with the town. And with that, I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I, I didn't notice, is the site distance on the plan for the road, I'm sure it's not a problem, given that it's fairly flat and fairly straight?
Yes, the site distances are on the plan. They're on the site plan, there's speed limits forty-five. We have a design speed of fifty miles an hour, and we have site distance, and the required site distance is four-hundred-and-eighty feet. We have eight-hundred feet to the east and over a thousand feet to the west.
Thank you, I see it now, yep.
I just have a question, how, how come you use fifty miles per hour for the, for the speed rather than fifty-five, ten miles over posted?
Uh, it's, the standard is five miles over posted.
At forty-five, above that?
Forty-five is posted, and design speed is typically five miles over.
And then when, when it, when it gets greater, it goes up to ten miles per hour over, so just, just want to make sure. At fifty miles per hour and fifty-five, it would be sixteen, fifteen-five. I did have a question on the easement map. The way you represent true north, Rush Scottsville Road basically runs east-west, your bearings on your property line are at eighty-nine degrees thirty, forty minutes or so, which is basically east-west, yet your map shows a, almost a ten-to-fifteen-degree angle. Why is that?
Uh, I am not sure what you're referring to, north.
You have a north arrow, go straight up, Rush Scottsville Road, which basically runs east-west.
Right, it's a, it's a, yeah, just very, you know, it's a few minutes and a few seconds off of being ninety degrees. You know, be east-west, right?
So I'm questioning, why do you represent the, the map that way?
Well, I, I mean, this is standard survey layout, I guess I'm, I'm just not quite sure what, what your question is.
My question is, why isn't Rush Scottsville Road match your north arrow? Being east-west rather than, and your north arrow says straight up and down.
Um, well, it's, I, I think you'd find if you overlaid that right-of-way line of Rush Scottsville Road on the north arrow, you'd find that it wasn't directly east and west, but we're only talking, we're, we're talking about twenty, roughly twenty-one minutes, which you, I mean, you, your eye can't see twenty-one minutes on a map of this scale. So, you know, for all intents and purposes, it is east or west, so.
According to the bearings, yes, but your map does not, in my view, does not properly represent east-west orientation. My other question is, I, I looking on the GIS mapping, and I question whether the, it looks like the angle of the, there, there is a hill shade version of the, with the LiDAR. And the, at the southern port of the property, the stream turns. And according to the LiDAR, it is parallel to the southern border, southern property line. Should there also be, and, and, but that's not represented in your easement map. Why should, should there be an easement, and how close is it actually to there? So I'm questioning whether the easement should also go east-west along southern, to a point where it is also accessible there.
Well, we located, the southern portion of that stream was located by LiDAR, shown by LiDAR, but I mean, I'm sure if it would make the town more comfortable for us to show a short, short section of twenty-foot easement down there, that's, again, it's within the setback, it's not an issue. But we didn't physically locate the stream at that corner. It, it's demonstrated just by LiDAR.
Okay, because what you're representing is different than what I see on LiDAR.
Well, we, what we do is we download pictometry images into our base drawing, and it's, it's based on the pictometry image. It's, that's what shows up down there, and then we overlay the LiDAR topo.
Okay. I, I think it should be, I think it's, it's, I'm questioning whether it's accurately shown.
It is accurately shown. I mean, it's.
Which goes back to my initial that your Scottsville Road is not east-west, and your north arrow is straight up and down. So the orientation is not accurately shown.
Well, I, I debate that with you, and I, I mean, if you'd like to have our, the head of our survey department contact you and go over that, I'd be glad to do that, but I'll stand my arm out.
All right, we'll just note that there is an objection to your representation of your survey map.
That'd be fine.
Ryan, can you, if you, if you look at Plan Sheet one and your easement map, I think what he's trying to draw attention to is if you rotated Scottsville Road in front of that lot to show it east-west, as you showed someone on your plan, it, it does appear to be off with the, the north arrows. There, there might have just been something dragging the CAD file that altered that.
I'll, I'll, again, I'll, I'll turn this over to our survey department, let them, let them take a look at that. I, it's out of my, you know, the survey's not in my area. But I'll have them take a look at it.
And I believe, Brian, that you, you provided an easement for that waterway with a twenty-eight foot right-of-way, and I presume that was just to not have to bother to follow the roaming of the creek around a little bit. So does, does that, does that extra eight feet cover the problem at the bottom there? At the southern corner?
Well, we've, what we've added to it, now, right now, we just show, again, on the latest updated plan, we show a, yes, I guess a twenty-eight, again, I'll have the survey department just lay that out, I will get into that, but of, that may be just to provide a little extra buffer in there.
Okay, well, we'll make a note of that. All right, anybody have anything else? Oh, how about, how about the electric service? I know it's obviously electric, and I, I didn't notice it laid out or what pole it comes from. Sometimes like to see that, do you know where that is?
Well, I, I can only assume, I mean, ultimately, R G and E makes a decision on where they bring their electric from. There's a pole, there, right on the, just east of the proposed driveway. And again, I would, I would assume that they will probably pick it up at that pole, and then they come underground from that pole into the house. But ultimately, the builder will turn these plans over to R G and E, and they'll design their system, so. But, but it will come underground from the closest pole, and it appears that that's the one just east of the driveway.
Okay, John, that's, how, how useful is it to show the, the electric line and where it comes from? John Hinman?
Sorry, just trying to get unmuted there. Um, we, we see people put it on, some people don't, from board to board, it's different. And he's corrected, once the utility company comes out there, they're going to determine the location of it, and it will most likely be that pole.
There, there is only one pole in front of the property. So that, that would be, unless they set a new pole, and it's national grid, not R G and E, correct?
Uh, that very well could be the case, yeah. I don't know where their transfer line is, where, where it switches, but whoever the utility is would determine the, that final location. Okay. Anything else? Any other members have questions of Greg? We'll certainly go through all the reports and documents in a bit.
Yeah, Scott, I have, I have a couple of questions, this is Jeff Warner. Um, so I have a question on the septic system, is it a raised fill or a modified raised fill system? Is it a, I guess, explain it in accordance to Monroe County Health with the setbacks, the side setback from the property to the west? Let me, see, it's the setback, the septic system, regardless of whether it's a raised or not, these ten feet, it's not a tight, a tight soil system would require a hundred-foot setback, and it's not a tight soil, I'm just checking our, it's, we had minerals of twenty-eight inches, so it is. But the perks were done at the conventional depth, which just makes it a raised system, so the setback, as I mentioned, from the property lines is ten feet.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought, and I just want clarification on that. And then, Mr. McMahon, the other, I guess, with Carl, Carl Ross's comment on the drain adjustments, we've done a number of these over the years in town. And depending what I'm looking at with the easement map, Carl, I picked up on the same. And depending what I'm looking at with the easement map, Carl, I picked up on the same thing, that the easement does go to the point from what I'm seeing on the map, where the stream meets the rear of the property, the southeast corner. Then, at, at that point, where the stream leaves that property, it becomes fully on the David Hatch property on the northwest and the southeast sides. So if there was going to be additional easements across that southern border, you'd also have to get easements from David Hatch. From what I, from what I gather. I guess I just wanted to note that for the record.
Yeah, and that would be, I mean, we, we can't get easements from David Hatch, that would be up to the town to secure the easements off the property, but we can certainly provide easements on this property as necessary for the town.
Yeah, no, I, I see no need for further easements, other than what you've provided.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to note, based on the LiDAR that I'm looking at, it looks like that at some point that swale was dug out and spoils were put on each side of the the property, so, or each side of the swale, so it's obviously, maintenance work has been done in the past.
Okay, so what, I think what I just heard in, in our judgment regarding the easement, that the benefits of having the straight-line easement there is worth giving up a little bit of the twenty feet at the very southeast corner. Right? Because looks like you could, you could get in to what, to the easement that's shown and clean out that portion of the creek if you had to.
My, my concern is if, if we have an easement to maintain that creek or that, that swale, that if it's only granted access from this property, we would need something on the southeast corner along the east-west to, to cover it. I'm still seeing the swale on LiDAR going parallel to the property line, not at the angle that they're showing it.
Yeah, well, okay, if, if the creek's not, we're showing, it's a different question, so maybe we can keep that as one of the conditions that leads to verify where the creek is. But we certainly can't try to get easements on somebody else's property. We, we use the application process as our leverage to get easement. Okay. All right, anything else? Rick or Steve?
No, the only question I had was already answered with the septic system on the setback, which was ten feet, based on the, what the engineer was talking about, so I'm good, Scott, thank you.
I, I, just a quick question, I've got two sets of plans, it looks like the whole house, the whole driveway was moved west, I'm gonna assume.
Yeah, look at, look at the date. Correct. So the, the, the most recent one is, what, eleven or December eighth, I believe?
Okay, so I got eleven twenty-one, and, yeah.
Yeah, December eighth is would be the latest set that you gave.
Okay, yeah, 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 that's all I had.
All right, then I'll go through and start reading lots of documents. First one from the Department of Planning and Development of Monroe County. And it says that according to our review of recent aerial photographs in the agricultural district maps, this project occurs on or within five hundred feet in agricultural, of land and agricultural production in Monroe County's Eastern Agricultural District. Therefore, an ag data statement has been submitted for this project as required based on the New York State Ag and Markets Law. So I know we had the, the correction previously, that it's not the southeastern corner as, as we're on the secret document. There's not the southeastern district, but the southern district. So do we have the, the needed agricultural data statement?
Yes. It's in the packet.
Okay. It lists, it lists the two truck farms nearby. So all it needed was a correction.
Let me find it. It's that data statement right here. It was in the first packet.
Yep. Yeah, I've got it. It was, is that, and that's something that you're going to correct to say south, southern district?
Are you speaking to me?
Well, no, to, to, Mr. McMahon.
Uh, yes, we corrected it on the plan, we, we can correct the and, and revised agricultural data statement to the town.
Yeah, certainly not a big deal. Okay, next is development of this property should be designed so that does not alter existing drainage facilities used by adjacent parcel, parcels. If the land is being farmed, the applicant is encouraged to contact the adjacent farmer and the Monroe County Farmland and Ag Protection Board to discuss proposed development. Monroe County Development Review Board has reviewed the subject application, have the following comments that need to be addressed prior to submission of final plans for approval. Uh, that is Monroe County Department of Health. Proposed project utilizes a private wastewater treatment system and will require approval by the Monroe County Department of Health, you know that. Monroe County Department of Transportation, this project was not sent to the Monroe County Department of Transportation for review. Applicant should verify with this agency that they do not have jurisdictional requirements for this project, and I think that is the case. Monroe County Department of Environmental Services, this product was not sent to them. Same thing. To verify that they don't have jurisdictional requirements. And lastly, the New York State Department of Transportation. All work within the New York two fifty-one right-of-way, including driveway and utility work, will require a New York State DOT Highway Work Permit. Yeah, I believe you've come and you pretty much addressed all those items. Okay, Rush Fire District, Board of Commissioners. After review of the above application, the Board of Fire Commissioners has no issues or concerns with the application as written. Rush Conservation Board. Just a bit of an aside, Shelley, they, they mentioned that they had no paper plans, and I, I'm not sure if that's, they're used to getting those or not, what is the policy about getting paper plans, the big copies to?
They, they reviewed the plan electronically before I even gave them the hard copy, because it was submitted two months early, but two days late for one, the date in November, in December. So they prematurely reviewed it.
Okay.
However, they're, yeah.
That's a good answer, so they, they are entitled to and normally would have a, a paper plan if they want one.
Yeah, they always get a paper plan.
Okay, so they have a couple of things, we have reviewed the named application, have the following questions, comments, one is land use space, and I frankly, I don't totally understand it, I think it might refer to the ag district form. Second one is drainage corridor to the east, the water course and protection of it, well, I believe you have plans to protect it with a barrier while you're working, and certainly you've signed the, will have signed the easement. So I'm not sure there's an issue there. Says the property has several environmental sensitive features, no apparent plan for protection other than the wetland and water course, I'm not sure what those are, does anybody know?
No.
And then they question the actual street address. And I think you did mention that. We have a number for it.
Yes, it's ten seventy-nine.
Yep. The big one here is the MRB Group Town Engineers Report. Seekers, the following sections of the Short Environmental Assessment Form, EAF Part One should be revised and resubmitted, and it says, question three shows the applicant plans to disturb the whole project area while the site plan stays a disturbance of one point oh seven, eight acres. This should be reviewed and revised, and you did exactly what I would expect you to do, Greg, advised it down to point nine nine nine, which changes your stormwater protection plan. Is that right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
I think it's not difficult to disturb that tiny, tiny fraction of an acre. You know, when, when they're developing it. Question two should include the New York State Department of Transportation and Department of Environmental Conservation. Question eleven is selected no, which is correct, however, the description of wastewater treatment plan is not complete as the state's entry sewage. The project plans, so a septic system with a raised fill system. And I think you've already corrected that. Since the scope of the project is still considered type-two action, no further seeker approval is required. And, Robert, that means we don't have to go through the EAF at the end of this, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Part, part two is in brief, right?
Okay, under general comments, it states all comments from Monroe County Department of Planning and Development should be addressed. All the comments from the Town of Rush Conservation Board should be addressed. Coordination with the New York State Department of Transportation will be required for the curb cut. Monroe County Department of Health coordinators is acquired. It says this coordination should be supplied by the town, but I think, Greg, you already said you did that, right? I'm not sure how the town would do that anyway.
We will provide the town, when we get a response, if we get any comments from the DOT, we'll forward those to the town. And the final approval from New York State DOT will, will come to, to the town.
Okay, site plan review, the only signature line that should be included on the site plans are the planning board chairman, town engineer, the Monroe County Department of Health approval box, and a Monroe County Water Authority. All others should be removed, and I, I might add, you really should remove the western one. I know that's where you're from, but still, this is Rush.
They've all, they've all been removed, and the Water Authority no longer signs plans, so we did remove the Water Authority, but we provided you with the letter.
Okay. It should be noted that Monroe County has only two ag districts, western and eastern ag district numbers text, the project is located in eastern, not southeastern, it should be reviewed and revised, you're onto that. The clear limits of disturbance should be identified on the site plan. The site data information from zoning district R thirty should include the proposed site data as well as required site data. Number eleven, show the limits of clearing of vegetation along the property, twelve, it appears that a vegetative swale along the right-of-way route two fifty-one. There appears to be a vegetative swale. Please correct the rating to channel flow from the road culvert to the tributary. All proposed downspout locations should be indicated on the plans. A notice to be added to the plans indicating that all downspouts are divided with splash blocks. Fourteen, a staging area and topsoil stockpile should be shown on the plans to verify if these will impact neighboring properties, water bodies. The appropriate detail should be added to the plans per D E C standards and specifications. Number fifteen, the silt fence should be extended further to the south to provide additional protection at potential runoff to the tributary, that's there is proposed grading in proximity to the creek flow path. Sixteen, temporary sedimentation basins and temporary check dams should be considered during construction. And I think of all the ones mentioned so far, that's the only one you kind of indicated might not be appropriate, you're right, right, right? Uh, the Town of Rush has a, and I, I think the way it's worded, should, should be considered as not, not a hard requirement. Number seventeen, the Town of Rush has a town-wide drainage district that requires an access easement to all waterways to allow the town to maintain the waterway if needed, the tributary side require twenty-foot easement beyond the bank of the stream for all portions that are located on the property in the water course corridor. The applicant can review the terms of easement, the attached drain achievement form, so you've, you've added the twenty-eight-foot easement, which covers the little bit of movement around of the string. And, and allows it to be a straight line. Eighteen, since the project involves greater than one acre of disturbance, which it no longer does, so you don't need the sediment, the SWIP program set up control. Okay, you want to make any other comments on, on those, Mr. McMahon?
Yes. No, we've, we've responded, we will, before we submit plans again to the town, we will address all those comments on the plans and, and provide all that information to the town.
So what, what we typically do is when we go through our review and approval process, we would put as a condition that you, you address all of those.
Yes, not, not a problem.
At this point in time, you know, it's fine to say you will do. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Any of the board members?
No.
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 Anybody in the audience, Gene? Are you Willie, for example?
No, I don't.
Okay, John Hinman? Covered everything you want?
Yeah, I, I would still request that at least some check dams be placed in the swale along the DOT right-of-way there, just because we are channelizing flow directly into the tributary. And at least provide us with details of a check dam and salt fence, other than that, I'm completely satisfied.
All right, Robert, anything on your part?
Nothing from me.
Okay, anybody in the audience? Have anything they want to add?
It looks like there's no, no one raising their hand, or no one asking to speak.
Okay, in that case, I'll declare the hearing closed. Now, if we had other applications, normally we would go through this type of process for those before cycling back to our review and approval process. But we have no others, so the way I set it up in the agenda, and, and in order to minimize the time of the applicants, I say we just move into that approval process. All right. Problem is, to my embarrassment, I don't have the resolution in front of me. I don't know what happened, but I'm pretty sure I had it. I know you should send it out again today, Shelley, and I saw Steve's response. And the fact is, I went back and I, I, for some strange reason, I did not get it with that second Sunday.
You want me to send it again right now?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, because I, it's, it's not the reason I don't have it. I thought I did have it directly from, from Robert. Previously. And it may be in my stack or somewhere. The other, the other option is somebody else who has it in front of them, one of the members, you can make the motion.
Scott, I have it in front of me.
All right, thank you.
Would you like me to go ahead?
Please do.
All right. So this is for, okay, now I'm, sorry, I need the application number.
Zero one P.
All right, so this is site plan resolution for application twenty twenty-two zero one P for ten seventy-nine Rush Scottsville Road Lot R one A. Whereas the planning board of the Town of Rush has examined application twenty twenty-two dash O one P submitted by McMahon-Maruir Associates as agent of Gerber Homes of eight twenty-two Hope Road, registry New York one four five eight zero, requesting site plan approval to con-
of eight twenty two Hope Road, Register, New York, one four five eight zero, requesting site plan approval to construct a single family dwelling with a septic system, driveway access and associated utilities at ten seventy nine Rush Scottsville Road, Rush, New York, one four five four three. And whereas the planning board has examined the application maps and other materials filed with the applicant, application, including the short environmental assessment form and all having reviewed all current site plans, building plans, environmental plans and reports, comments and reports from the town professional staff, the public and other interested and involved agencies associated with the application, including the comments from the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development's December fifteenth, twenty twenty one review. And whereas a public hearing on the application was held on January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, and notice was posted as required by law. And whereas all persons at the hearing desiring to speak on the matter were heard, all correspondence on the matter was read and all comments and statements that were received during the public hearing and or at other duly held meetings of the planning board were considered by the planning board. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board determines that this is a type two action exempt from secret review pursuant pursuant to section six seventeen point five C eleven of Title Six of New York Code and Rules and Regulations concerning the construction of a single family residence, including provision of necessary utility connections. And it is further resolved that upon consideration by the planning board of the factors set forth under section one twenty dash sixty nine B three of the town zoning law, including the location and arrangement of buildings on the property, adequacy type and arrangement of trees, shrubs, other landscaping, tents suiting a buffer between this and adjoining lands, adequacy of separate disposal of stormwater and sanitary waste protection of adjacent properties. The planning board grants site plan approval. And it is further resolved that the site plan approval is granted subject to the following conditions. The first, number one, no work is to commence until the applicant obtains a building permit from the Town of Rush. Two, the applicant must meet any other applicable town building and inspection requirements. Three, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the town engineer as indicated in the town engineer's letter dated January fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Four, the applicant obtains approval of town engineer, town highway superintendent and Monroe County Health of Monroe County Department of Health for septic. Now, I, uh, Scott, I'm gonna stop there. Town Highway is not needed because it's a state road, is that correct?
Um.
So that would be New York DOT would be in there instead of Town Highway.
That's a good question, Robert, can I comment on that?
Yes, I think that is the case, that it would be the, the Department of Transportation because it's the state road.
So let me read, thank you, Robert, so I'm gonna reread for and, and put that, put the correct wording in. So the applicant obtains approval of town engineer, New York State, New York State Department of Transportation and Monroe County Department of Health. Number five, the applicant adds driveway section detail meeting the, uh, National Fire Protection Association standards acceptable to the fire chief and the building code enforcement officer. Six, the applicant shall fill out and execute a drainage easement agreement. Are there any others that need to be added? Steve?
Yeah, I thought our, our town engineer wanted the dams put in and the salt fence extended.
Okay, so that would be seven.
Yeah, appreciate it, Jeff.
Well, isn't that a, wasn't that a condition of the, of the town engineer, though?
There would be, that would be, I guess, Steve, that's right, so that would be in his comments, um, and, and we address that, so.
Um, anybody else? Did, did have the question of verifying the north-south direction uh, with the town engineer and the stream location at the south end at the southeastern corner. So we put in something like, uh, verify the north-south direction with town engineer and stream location at the southeast corner.
Yes. So there would be seven and eight?
Yeah, it could be show the electric line from the pole, since there's only one pole with, if, I mean, Carl has seen it correctly. Anything else?
All right, so I made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werther?
Hi.
Member Werner?
Hi.
Member O?
Hey, would, since the resolution states that, uh, there was a full, uh, review of the plans, I have to abstain because I have not fully reviewed the plans. But I have no objections.
Chairman Strach?
Hi. So with that, the, the motion is carried. Uh, thank you, Jeff, appreciate the good catch you made on the DOT as well.
I guess I'll take a moment and, uh, welcome our new homeowners, I see Iman tonight, so welcome to the Town of Rush. I know you probably had some thoughts about going through this whole process, but, uh, a lot of it's boy who played for us. But welcome to the town, welcome to the Town of Rush and, and, uh, hope all goes well with building your new home.
Thank you. We look forward to being active members of the community.
Very good.
Well said, Steve, thank you, and, and welcome as well. Okay, with that, uh, it finishes up the, uh, single application, so everybody's welcome to stay or leave if you have better things to do. We will go on to some other items that are less routine than, uh, working on applications.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you from Gerber Homes also, appreciate all your help.
Good night.
Good night. Everybody else stay on, though. Okay, um, shown on the agenda is informal sessions of two commercial proposals. Uh, we had a surprise this afternoon that Shelley got a note which she forwarded. Um, but let me at least say what those two proposals originally were. One was so-called dorsal property seventy two sixty two West Henry Road uh, at the corner of two fifty one, as you know, and that was proposal for a truck stop and Dunkin' Donuts and possibly a car wash. The other one was the, uh, the most famous spot in town, and that is fifty nine forty six East Henry Road. That's the so-called Big M property, where there's a proposal for a liquor store. Uh, those were obviously very much in the early, uh, in fact, finding stage. Because today, actually today, at ten thirty two, Shelley got the note, says, sorry for the last minute notice, and this is from PJ Singh. Uh, Shelley, do you know if that's the PJ Singh we associate with, uh, Sri Vidra Temple? Is that the same guy?
I don't know if it's the same person, I've only spoken to him on the phone.
Okay. Anyway, so sorry for the last minute notice, but unfortunately I will not be attending planning board today. The deals for both properties fell through, I'm continuing my search in the area, and if anything comes up in the future, I'll contact you. So those are unfortunately off the table. But that does give us a little shorter meeting. Now, I, and it's in the place of those, I, I will bring up one other thing. And that is, uh, a, uh, application by optimization technology, they're the, one of the bigger companies on a high-tech drive. And, uh, there were a number of notes that went around on that. They, uh, believe they had approval in twenty thirteen to combine two lots, uh, for their main property and another one. And, uh, they're looking to get the, uh, planning board chair signature on that. Apparently for some reason, it was never fully signed and never fully completed. Uh, I, I went back and looked at the, there's a summary for twenty thirteen that is called approvals and resolutions, so it's not the actual meeting notes, but just a summary, and I didn't see it there. I just got a, another note that somebody says it, it was approved, I believe, in December of twenty thirteen. No, December eighteenth, twenty thirteen, I'm sorry, twenty twelve, twenty twelve. So that may be why I didn't see it, I looked it wrong here, based on, uh, information that I had. So if, if indeed it was approved, and it's just a problem with the signatures, I think all we need to do is verify, uh, that the new set of plans that they're providing have the same information as the old set of plans, and I think we can get all the signatures. Now, Robert, are you okay with that type of assumption?
Yes, I'm okay with that. And, and I agree with you, we, we should ensure that the original, that, that it was originally approved in twenty twelve or, or twenty thirteen, whatever the case may be.
That, that, that was my requirement, that we actually can verify that it was approved, and now I know it's late twenty twelve rather than twenty thirteen. And also that, that any new plans they have, have the same information as the old plans or any changes are insignificant. Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to verify that, that should make them much happier than what they've been so far. Uh, the, the town code does allow, uh, I don't have the section here, but it, there is a section in the town code that says for a simple re-subdivision, the planning board can essentially forego all the requirements, not all the requirements, but forego the process, which includes all the requirements for approval. So had, uh, if it was unlikely that, uh, this really was just a redo of, of an existing approval, uh, then we, then we might have been asked to go through a simpler process, and I would have been willing to attempt that, which we figure out with that simpler process ought to be. But it looks like we don't have to go that way. Anybody else have anything to add there? So Jean, I know, I know that was a concern of yours, uh, because you were part of some of the mails, the emails that went back and forth, so it looks like, uh, it is there from twenty twelve.
Yes, a good find.
It was a good find. By a guy very close to you. Okay, um, now we're going into some other topics. Uh, kind of unusual that we get into this type of thing, but I'm gonna move into item five, planning board requests of the clerk's office. Uh, two things there, one is, uh, all of you know that the documents are being put into the, the the application, the electronic version, as well as all the reports that come in it are put into a strange location in the town code, which works well, but it's a strange name, it's a derivation table. I think that's, uh, yes, Shelley and, and Pam, who's on, it's, it just was an available space. Not that you, for this purpose, but it was an available space and it tends to work well. So everything's there in one spot electronically. Uh, I personally like the idea. I do have a, a couple of questions about it, however, and see if we can perhaps make it better for us. And that is, um, what about the order of the applications? I mean, they're, they're nicely located, that they have the application name and all the reports that come in for it right under that, so it's, it's very nice grouping. Uh, but what seems to be happening is newer applications are going on the bottom, and my concern is that when we get down, uh, till middle of the year, end of the year, the new applications will be down a long ways, I will have to scroll down and look for it. Is there a possibility of putting the applications in the reverse order, so the newest ones go on top? Shelley or Pam, can you talk to that?
I can speak to that, um, actually, I worked with general code to find a place that we could use that wasn't being used a lot. We couldn't add a new category, we just used that and found out that we could create notes that only municipal users could, could see because we couldn't put the entire application for the entire public, because there is some sensitive information on those applications. Um, and I cannot change the order that they're in, that's where they go. The only way I can tell you is if you want me to delete the old applications, that would move the, the new ones up, but I can't change the order.
Okay, so essentially you're just adding to the bottom of whatever there, you don't get a chance like you were in, would in a Word document or something, to put new things at the top.
So, I cannot.
It's a double-edged sword then, because I, I mean, I like having a history, what were the plans around how long you would keep them before deleting?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, but really specific plans, uh, on how long you would keep the applications and their reports there before deleting them.
This is a new. Okay. This is a, a new plan, and we have just devised this with general code, which they are very happy with, that we have come up with this. So if you have additional ideas that you want to submit to us, that's fine too, but we can only work with what we have.
Okay.
So.
That's good, I mean, I don't, I don't, certainly I'm not objecting to the general concept and the use of those, I, I really like those electronic documents uh, and being, being, being that accessible, but I'm just trying to make them better. So if that was something you could pursue with general code, see if it's possible to put the new ones at the top, this, whether, how the, other members of the planning board feel about that.
Okay, uh, Chairman Scott, someone in the, a resident has their hand up, can they speak?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, Philip Wickerham?
Good evening, um, I have been trying to figure out how to go about accessing the documents that are supposed to be available for each of these meetings. Um, tonight's meeting should have had the availability of the application for the, uh, ten seventy nine Rush Scottsville Road, as well as some of the other informal discussions, and I have not been able to figure out how to do that. Uh, Chairman Strach, do you have any suggestions on how the public is able to access those documents before the meeting?
Well, um, I guess the short answer is no, um, that's kind of the, the double-edged sword of this new site. It, it works very well for restricting public access to the confidential information, like people's names and phone numbers perhaps, and your personal addresses. On the other hand, it doesn't fulfill the need, need that you've talked about, Phyllis.
Right, and as you know, once they make that application, it is no longer, uh, private information. So once the application is submitted to the town, that does become public, and it can be foiled at any time. So it should be available according to the governor's new directive that any documents be available for public view once they're posted on an agenda.
Scott, can I jump in here?
Sure.
These documents for the application should be available at the, at the clerk's office for, for reviewing and copying, um, ahead of time.
But it should also be available online if it is available. So from what I understand, if the, uh, planning board members can get it via online access, the public should also be able to get it online access.
And that's a process that, that the clerk and I are working on, on making feasible with the new technology, but absolutely, we're working on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phyllis, so I think, I think the answer is just as a summarize, it's, it's between the clerk, clerk and, and the town attorney to figure out how to, to meet the state's expectations.
Well, and the supervisors, the administration as well.
Town board, sure.
Thank you.
I will add, I, I learned the hard way, that you can copy those, those reports that come in or are placed under each application, those are really hyperlinks. You can copy those and send them to somebody else in email, I learned that the hard way. So if your goal is not to give away confidential information like names and phone numbers, uh, you don't want to be doing that.
Hey, Scott? I, um, I guess maybe you address Phyllis's concern, and I think Carl brought this up last year um, about trying to get things electronically. Um, and, and Carl, I, I mean, we listened to you and hear. And, and Carl, I, I mean, we listened to you and hear you a year later, and, and they're still not up. But for Pam and Shelley, if there's a resident that's out of town or because of COVID and all that, the town hall basically is open, but if people don't wanna go, if they called your office and asked for the document to be emailed to them, or mailed a copy of, you, I mean, have you had those requests, or at least you could do that in the short term, until you get things up and going electronically available to the public? Sorry, I guess that was the question.
That, that is a question that I asked Attorney Howe today, because we did have that question. Right now, it's not practicalable to do, and if we had more than one, two, three people asking for that, it's very cumbersome. People could also ask for copies and come in, but they could pay for them twenty-five cents a piece.
Okay.
And we don't have the technology right now to redact information that is confidential.
Okay, but if it's on an application, I guess like Phyllis said, the application submitted, that's town, that's a public document, is what I would think.
I'm sorry, I'm working with the clerk's office at the town board level to see if we can improve this process going forward. You know, to, to make this easier from an administrative standpoint for, for our, our folks, and then to make these documents as publicly available as possible.
Okay, thank you. Scott, I'd like to add one more thing, back to the sequence of loading the applications on the website. I could foresee any current application being on there, and then Pam, I guess as you work with the code people to build this site or the folders or files, maybe we could have an archive folder someplace for, by year or by month to put, probably by year would be more appropriate, to put applications once they've been approved, and get them off of the active list and put them over into archives. That's just a easier said than done. I'm thinking out loud here. Thank you.
Can I, can I just speak to that? We've already been working on that.
Okay, great. Great.
That's, that's a good upgrade. Okay. So one other question I have is like tonight, we only had one application, and when we're working remote, of course, my, my printer's working overtime. Normally, when we have meetings in, together in person in the town hall, Shelley makes a lot of copies. And they're all available. So could there be a process where now that particularly we're on a little bit later cycle, we may have information a little bit earlier in the cycle? Is there a process where we could ask the clerks to maybe have hard copies available for us, say Thursday before the Tuesday meeting or something like that, that we could pick up? Is that type of thing rational?
I would love to be able to do that, however, being that I've been the deputy town clerk for a year and a half, two years, I don't know. Quite often, I get a lot of things the day of or the day before, or at the last hour, or it changes in something that I've already made copies of. And does that mean you are all gonna come and pick them up, or do you want me to mail them to you? How do you want that to work?
Yeah, I think, I think rationally, you know, you have to recognize that what, whatever the time is, there's gonna be chances of things coming in after that, in which case you'd have to handle electronically and print them out if you wanted hard copies at home. You could make the, you could make the day Monday before the Tuesday meeting, you know, whatever, whatever you thought had the best chance of doing it. So my, my question is, do the, the, the planning board members, would they like the opportunity to pick up hard copies?
I guess I, I have a question. If something is on the, on the agenda, and they're getting, you're getting copies at four o'clock prior to the meeting, you're still entertaining those requests?
Well, applications have a due date, that's what, six weeks ahead of the meeting date, something like that? So that's not the issue. The issue is getting the reports from all the supporting people like the county, or in this case, it was even a response from the applicant himself, as it was, as a re-response to the, the town engineer. So those types of things do happen.
Well, I mean, does, then it doesn't make sense then to have a deadline and say, if we don't have these materials in hand by this date, we have to table that and then, and then move on.
Well, we, we, we try to meet the applicant's needs as best we can. We, we have a pretty substantial deadline for the application before the meeting. The issue is all supporting documents from the other agencies. We, we have less control over that, and if, if we set a deadline there, we're just punishing the applicant, the applicant through no fault of their own.
So this, this, I guess, this is the way we've done it in the past, is if, if these reports or these come into the clerk's office, copies are made and ready for distribution and the meeting, so that they'd be available for a meeting on site. Is that typically what happens?
Yes, maybe you get them electronically ahead of time, and certainly with the current system on E-code, you would have them as soon as they show up electronically in there. But in terms of hard copies to work from during the meeting, we've been getting hard copies just ahead of the meeting at the town hall.
Okay, so then, I guess if, if you're gonna maintain the application on the, the agenda, then it would be up to members of the, and if, if you're saying we, you know, need to have that information in hand, we would have to pick up hard copy prior to the meeting, whether it's Zoom or whether it's in-person meeting.
Well, that's, some, some people, like our previous town attorney, prefer just keeping everything electronic and except at the meetings with his laptop in front of him. I, as, as chairman, I would hate to move around between screens, I'd rather have hard copies.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with electronic versions. That, that, that would work for me, as long as we had that information ahead of time.
We wouldn't want Shelley making copies for you, for example, if, if you're just as happy with electronic during the meetings, when you're not in town. And how's anybody else feel? Hard copies for a remote meeting or not needed?
Scott, I'll chime in. I like the hard copy of the initial site plan to, to review that, but all, any correspondence that comes back from any agency, I am absolutely fine with electronic, and I know that's been updated. Tonight's application is a good, a good example of that. So I, I, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with Shelley emailing the correspondence back, but as long as I have the initial map, that would be great.
Yeah, I, I, I think we have agreed that we want the hard copy of the original application, particularly because the, to match the drawings, it's gonna be so big that you can't see the detail, and put things in perspective on the screen. Okay, anybody else feel they need hard copies at home during the meeting?
No.
Okay, I'm good with the late working.
All right, so Shelley, if I really wanted to, I could ask you, maybe on a Friday, to have copies, one copy made for Monday, I could pick it up perhaps?
I guess, I guess so, Russ. I don't know.
Well, I.
So if I need to know how many people are gonna want copies, so that I can have them ready, yeah.
I think I, I, I agree. I think you'd have to tell Shelley ahead of time. I think what we're hearing is, it's just me at this point.
I'll, I'll take them too. I'll come and get them.
Okay, so that would be two. Possible? And, and would you recommend the Monday?
I don't think we could set an exact date. Let's see how, how we can manage this.
I don't think you can set a date when you're sure everything's there. I think you could set a date where you pick up what's available, and the rest is electronic.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Is that fair? And does, does Monday sound best in that viewpoint? I mean, you could do it Tuesday noon of, of the meeting, but some people work in that sort of thing.
Not up to me. I mean, we're there Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four thirty, so.
Okay, well, I, I bet you get ninety, ninety-five percent of the documents looking across multiple applications by the Monday before the Tuesday meeting. So why don't we, why don't we think about saying Monday noon or something like that? Okay. Now, the, the big bugaboo we had was my desire that when something is posted to the website, get some sort of notification, preferably automatic, that's independent of the clerks, that something new has been posted. Now, my, there is a, a button at the top of the disposition, or I'm sorry, the grid of table, that you can push that gives you notifications. But I understand that may not work for these types of documents. Is that correct?
And I, I, I thought that I responded to you, that button is only if general code makes an update in general code. It has nothing to do with notes. Right.
Okay, I, I did hear that. I, I thought I heard it from Jean.
Yeah, that, that, I, I got all, very excited when I saw that button and clicked on it and signed up for automatic updates, and because it said, you know, for this particular chapter, the derivation table, it was specific about that, so I thought it would work. And I guess it doesn't, but it would be nice if general code could tweak their program so that, that would work, that would solve a lot of issues, I think.
That table was there before we decided to use it, and the reason why we're using it is because Jeannie from general code looked and said, there's only one document in that chapter, and you rarely use it. So that way, we could use that chapter, and you wouldn't be lost or confused. You would find everything that we put there. So that was there before we came. That's why it's called derivation table. It has nothing to do with us at all. We're just using it.
And it is a mechanism that we were following the laws and following the request of the conservation, planning, and zoning board to have all the documents available to them. So that is what we are going to do and move forward.
I don't think anybody's objecting to that. It's probably much better than anything we had before. So my, my other question is, if it's not doable automatically, then my request would be, and I wanna get the opinion of the other planning board members, that maybe once or twice a week, we just get an email saying we have added something to a particular application. Doesn't have to be what it was, doesn't have to be as soon as it comes in. It could be, at worst, once a week, just so we know something's arrived, we are reminded to go and look for it. And I believe the, the clerks do not look fine fondly upon that idea. So would you, would you make your case? Well, let me first ask the planning board members, do you feel it's useful to get a notification that something has arrived, so you know to go in and look for it?
Scott, I, I, I think it's upon us as planning board members to look for the information. If they get it in there, we can go, we can go inward. Adults, you know, we can go look once or twice a week and see if the information is in there as we review things.
Okay. Everybody else feel the same way?
I, I don't, I'm not sure how you've been, you know, doing in the past, but that, you know, would make sense that, that anything that comes in that affects an application would be, could be documented, but that's, you know, it all depends on, you know, that, that makes sense to me, what your proposal is, Scott.
What, okay, in other words, you get a notification that, that something has arrived?
Yes.
Anybody else? Steve or Rick, how do you feel?
It, it works the way it is, either way. It works the way it is right now, for me, personally.
Okay. Steve, how do you feel?
No, it works for me, Scott.
Okay.
As currently is.
Okay. All right, so.
Thank you, members.
Yeah, what we, what we'd ask is that you continue to look at a way to post the most recent applications at top. It's working with general code to try to do that. And as Steve, or I'm sorry, Jeff mentioned, it'd be great if there were some archive process, so we could keep information around for a long time. It's a very handy way to look for it and find it. We agree that you're gonna continue to provide, provide hard copies of the actual applications as they come in. Okay, so if a member wants hard copies, we can talk to Shelley, hopefully Monday or even Tuesday of the meeting, and come and get copies of what's available at the time. And I guess there's not enough interest in the notification that unless general code found a way to do it automatically, we won't try to pursue that. But I would ask the clerks to talk to general code about that, if there is a notification process already there, if it could be extended somehow to the information you put in.
I've already asked general code. I've already asked them, and they said no.
Okay. Then I guess that's it for that. Good. I think it was worth discussing. Okay, the, the next topic is new laws that were not added to the town code or were added incorrectly for one reason or another. I will mention that I've been hit twice by new laws that were approved or valid laws, but were not in the E-code or the hard copy code, the notebooks. And those are, one is the solar law of local law four of twenty nineteen, amending solar energy systems, chapter one twenty, section seventy-four. That actually may be in there, but it's not in as chapter seventy-four. It appears to be in as chapter sixty-four. Actually, chapter sixty-four point one. I'm not sure why it is that way. Maybe Pam or somebody else has an idea. But it, it burned me because I wrote a major document referring many, many times, tens of times, to the wrong code, and actually had to go back and change them all later. So that's one. Another one is local law two of.
I mean, to answer them one by one, because they're, the previous attorney did, I did believe, address that issue of the numbering.
Okay, and what was the conclusion?
I think he did change the, the number, because it was incorrect to begin with.
He changed it to what, seventy-four?
Without looking, I, I can't tell you, but I do recall that a number was changed, because it was listed incorrectly in the local law to be in with.
Yeah, the, well, the, the law, the local law four of twenty nineteen is to be put in chapter one twenty, section seventy-four, and it, it's not there. There's a different law twenty, of section one twenty, sixty-four point one. So I'm not sure what you mean by he addressed it. Maybe he told you that it was not, not in the right number, but anyways, it's not in as the right number.
My understanding that was supposed to be corrected, and I, I don't know what happened there.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is the issue was raised before, but apparently still not corrected. Okay, so that's one. Another one that doesn't really affect the planning board, but while I was going through this audit of my own volition, I found another one, and that's local law two of twenty nineteen, which is reimbursement of fees. It appears to be mostly added to E-code, but at least the book I was given in the boardroom at the town hall was not in. Beyond that, there's a, a minor difference, is that there's supposed to be a new section one hundred dash twenty-six that has been added to E-code as section one twenty, twenty-five point one. Now, that sounds strange, but I know why that happened, because there already was the one twenty, twenty-six in the next chapter. So I think that's an error in writing the law, as opposed to entering the, entering the law. But the other one that does affect us is local law one of twenty fourteen, private roads. Actually, it's called private road design criteria and construction specs, which is a strange name, because it's really only private roads. That is not added at all since twenty fourteen. I can kind of explain that one way too, because it, that new private road law was added with this huge bunch of design criteria as the same local law, and apparently the big group of design criteria got added, but this local law about private roads was missed, so, so that needs to be updated. And that also got me, because they spent literally a day of time looking at workarounds in the town code, trying to figure out how we could approve private roads, not knowing that, that there was a law there already approved. But anyway, so Pam or Shelley? So Pam or Shelley, what is the process of updating these? My understanding is for new laws, it's fairly straightforward. You put them in the new law section. You can assign a title to it and then it shows up in the table of contents on the right side as a scroll, which would indicate to people who know what they're doing that there is a new law to look at. So it's in the new law section. But the problem is with these things, they don't show up as a new law or in the code. So what is the process for updating? And I know you've been thinking about it, Pam, so appreciate your comments.
Well, the process of updating, first, the local law is adopted. Then I do send the local law to the state to be adapted and be able to be used. Then it is sent to General Code to be codified.
But there's, isn't there a preliminary step where you put it, you can put it yourself into new laws?
I put the proposed local law in the general code, yes.
In the new laws section?
E-code 360. I do not put it in the code itself.
Right.
General Code does the codification.
It's my understanding, but I thought it was pretty straightforward, something you can do is to put it in new laws. And once it's there, it shows up in table of contents. There's an indicator on the right, which is that curled up piece of paper with a string around it.
I don't, I don't put it in the new laws. I send it to General Code. General Code puts it in there. And then they send the town a bill in order to get approval. Once it is approved, then it is signed and then it gets put into the general code for everybody. And we get supplements in the office so that they could be placed into the code books in the office.
At the same time, they put it into E-code. But I thought there was a preliminary step where it could be put simply into new laws. Okay, so what's the process for these three? And then when do you think they'll be finished?
I have already sent them to General Code. As you mentioned earlier, we were going to be meeting. And I did have to reschedule or cancel that for the time being. But I have sent codes, the local laws into General Code to get codified.
Okay, good. So those three were sent in, super. Okay, that's all I had on that topic. Anybody else? All right. February meeting plan is next on the agenda. The bottom line, there are no applications, but I hope to use the meeting for topics that we will talk about during the attorney-client session coming up. So anybody else have anything they want to mention before we go into attorney-client privilege?
Hey Scott, I had, I had one thing that you were talking about earlier. It was on the agenda, the informals. I know as a group, we've talked about this before about requiring some type of documentation for the informals. Has anybody given that any thought? Because we had nothing other than what you sent. We had nothing for the informals. And for me, it's hard to even look or ask questions based on an informal with nothing in my hand.
Yeah, that's a fair question. And for everybody else, the other towns do have processes for informals, which they also afford a fee for. But it requires them to provide certain amounts of information so that we can know what we're talking about and have a better idea of what they're leading to. We do have examples where people came in for an informal because the communication was so vague. What they felt was bad information. In this particular case, if you talk about the items that they wanted to do, it brings up to mind all types of issues that I certainly, we could have spent probably a couple hours talking about just so knows. With the guy bringing up the informal. So that's the question. I don't have an answer for you, Steve, but it'll remain. I will say that during the upcoming session, the attorney-client session, one of my questions was, does anybody else have energy around certain items like application forms that they'd be willing to lead? So keep that in mind. Okay, anything else?
I guess just to follow up on what Steve was just talking about. What is the process for scheduling informal sessions? And could it be a requirement of having both hard copy and electronic copy of whatever they want to talk about? I know that in, that I would present red line sketches or just something, you know, in front of a planning board or a board just saying, this is what we're planning on doing. So is that the type of thing that you're talking about, Steve, having better information available to have a better informal session?
Yeah, we talked about it briefly as a group, Carl. We never really set anything concrete. For me, it's, I'd like to have at least in my hand, basically what I call a tax map with the adjacent properties and just a brief description of what they're talking about. So if they come in front of the planning board, we have a general idea of location, tax parcel, what they're talking about. So when they start, we should have a little bit of background on it. And I know we're going to talk about it later tonight, so.
Okay.
Yep, and Shelley went as far as, within a couple of days, dug out some examples from other towns of what they require for a so-called informal. They may call it something else, but it would be all informal. So there's benchmarks you can have out there. But if you guys who have energy, keep it in mind. Okay, Robert, at this point, we don't cancel, we don't declare the meeting completed.
No, I would. I would adjourn the meeting, just, and this is a practical matter. Because otherwise, when we come out of a privileged session, we have to reopen the meeting and then it gets more complicated in terms of then having to take off the YouTube and going back online. So I would adjourn the meeting here and then go into the privileged session.
Okay, that sounds better to me. All right, so anybody else have anything before we adjourn the meeting? In that case, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second? All right. Shelley, poll.
Member McPherson?
Hi.
Member Werther?
Hi.
Member Werner?
Hi.
Member O?
Hi.
Chairman Strock?
Hi. Okay, so at this point, we'd like the planning board members, Shelley and Pam and Robert, certainly welcome to stay and David, if you want. And I think that's about it. Oh, Jean, Jean, you welcome to stay?
Okay.
Did I miss anybody?
We should just make sure that everybody else who is not with the town is excused from the Zoom meeting.
I'm, yes, I'm kidding. People are slowly.
And the recording is off.
Yeah, and that the public recording is off. And also, I think we don't, and also.